Called order of the Paintsville City Council Regular Meeting, Monday, January 14th, 2019, 6:00 PM, Paintsville Recreation Center. Chief, would you care to lead us in the place?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief? A little call.
Name?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Lo?
Right.
Rick?
Here.
Dean?
Present.
And Sarah?
Present.
I've just got one announcement to make tonight. We are losing another one of our valued employees to retirement. I don't know how many years he served, there had to be several. Mr. Joe Keaton, retirement will be, his last day will be January the 31st. As you know, Ms. Vergey has also retired from City Hall. So all of you out in public, if you don't care, if you see these two people out in public, shake their hand, pat them on the back for all the valued years of service they have given to this city.
When did you say Joe was?
His last day will be the 31st of January, correct Ms. Kim?
Yes.
Both of those people have been of value to this city. So if you see them out in public, shake their hand and pat them on the back. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, December 10th, 2018, and special call meeting, December 26th, 2018.
I'll move that when we appoint those minutes of last meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Approval of department reports.
I'm going to motion we approve that.
Report.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Approval to pay bills as presented.
I'll so move that we do pay.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Now, we have a very lengthy agenda tonight, don't we, Miss Robin? And we're going to try to get through it the best we can. There was a couple add-ons that came in just a little bit later. Let me remind everybody, if you want to be on the agenda, you need to get that into us before noon the Thursday before the Monday City Council meeting. First thing on the agenda, where are you, Mr. Bryant?
I'm right here.
Mr. Bryant would like to present the audit. Is that correct?
That is correct. I've got the audit for fiscal year in June 30th, 2018. Robin, is this close enough?
Yes.
Want me to get a little closer?
No.
Like I said, I have the audit here for the fiscal year in June 30th, 2018. And you don't know me, I think there's a couple new ones. Roger, did you say? Enough tins.
My name is Rick Preston.
Rick Preston. Rick Preston and Sarah.
Sarah.
It's nice meeting you too, Sarah. Anyway, I have the audit here and I'll briefly go over it. I know you have a long agenda here and I'll begin with start our first thing here. The intended auditor's report, which is on page three. Basically, this is the, right here, it shows what management's responsibility is for the audit. Management's responsibility is to prepare and have fair presentation of financial statements. Auditor's responsibility is to express an opinion on these financial statements based on my audit work that I've done. And you'll see down here below, you can see the opinion, and in my opinion, the financial statements referred to is in fairly in all material respects respect the financial position of the City of Paintsville, Connecticut as of June 30th, 2018. If you look below the opinion, you'll see other matters. We did implement GASB statement number 75 this past year. If you remember, three years ago, we implemented GASB statement number 68, which was on the application of the new pension requirements. So that was, we're in the fourth year of that one now, and this was the first year. GASB statement 75 is the implementation of the post-employment benefit for the retired employees. So that, so anyway, that's what that stayed there, and then you will see in the disclosures and so forth, there are additional disclosures for the retirement health insurance and stuff like that, so. So I won't really go any further than that, other than say that on page three, you'll see the net OPEB liability. The city's OPEB liability is two, a little over $2 million. So that was additional liability that's been put on the financial statements of the city for this fiscal year. So anyway, going over to page seven, let me go over the financials for this statement. Statement of revenues, expenditures, and change in fund balance at full year in June 30th, 2018. And I'm just going to focus on the general fund. You see tourism there, but then the other governmental funds, that is your RODA department, coal and metal, plus we got Colton and RODA, and I don't want to slip into my mind. But anyway, but anyway, on the general fund, you'll see your total revenues for the year were $7,237,298. You'll see your total expenditures were $6,647,362. You had transfers in from tourism for $283,170. Sale of capital assets, $14,747. Borrowed, $41,444. You had an increase in fund balance for the year of $929,297, bringing your fund balance at beginning of the year from $1,112,234 to $2,41,531. The increase in fund balance was up from $351,000 prior year. That was managed from your revenues. If you look, the total revenues were $7,237,000, I told you. If you back out the grant revenue, which is, you know, non-recurring for most part, your total revenues were a little over $6,180,000, not including the grant revenue. That was up from $5,800,000 prior year. Ambulance receipts were up about $200,000 last year. Occupational taxes were up about $50,000 last year, and then the rest of that increase in revenue was here and there, different revenues. Those were primary increases of revenue. So you had an increase in revenue, and then your, another reason for the increase in fund balances past year was your debt service. You paid off the $500,000 loan that you had for your working capital, and you had to repay that off in three years. The last year was the first year you didn't have to repay that because it was already paid off. So you had a decrease in principal payments last year of $217,000. You see, you paid out $171,000 in principal on loans last year, and that was $387,000 prior year. And of course, your interest was down also because you didn't have that large amount of debt. So anyway, that's, and then also tourism, another increase there. Tourism's transfers in were $283,000, prior year they were $195,000. So that's a good job. Got a $929,000 increase in fund balance this past year. If you look over on page five, this is your balance sheet for the government of the general fund. You'll see your total assets are $2,292,820. You'll see cash is $1.5 million, your receivables roughly about $200,000. Due from Paintsville Utilities, $64,000. That is your monthly garbage fee receivable there. And due from 911 is $532,643. And I want to discuss that here in a moment about the 911. You'll see your liabilities, $251,000. Of course, these are governmental funds, so they don't include your long-term debts because you've got the, you've got some bonds and some notes and so forth. And then, of course, you can see your fund balance down there, $2,41,000, as I said before. Going back to the 911 fund, the $532,000, that's been accumulating for the last 10 years, and we've got every year. And I've talked about this, and you can see over on these other governmental funds, it's a liability on that side due to general fund. I talked to the mayor about this. At some point, my recommendation is, this general fund's probably going to have to forgive that $500,000, because 911's never, I'm not going to say never, most likely not going to be able to repay that half million dollars. So, whereas the city has done such a good job with its finances the last two years, and now you've got a $2 million fund balance, it can absorb that loss, or not loss, it can absorb that amount due from 911 and not take your fund balance, general fund balance, into a deficit. So you're sitting on a $2 million fund balance now, so. So I mean, that's something I think you guys need to discuss and see if you guys want to do that in the future. This, let's see. The only, the only finding that I had on it was the same finding I have every year, the lack of segregation duties for such a small city, you don't have the required segregation for, you know, you've got city clerk taking in property tax receipts, posting it on the receivable, the ledger and so forth. So you just don't have enough people to segregate everything that needs to be segregated. This was a single audit this year. The city did spend more than $750,000 in federal money. So, single audit means I had to report on your compliance with federal spending. You spent $1 million, you can see on page 55, this is the very last page, page 58. You see, the city spent $1,92,451 dollars last year in federal funds. And I tested, and I did my audit, I reviewed the hazard mitigation grant, that was for the Carter Lane project. You spent $591,131 there. And after my testing of that audit, you were in compliance with everything that needs to be, with all of your applicable compliance requirements. And I tested 100% of the disbursements on that fund, so everything, I looked at all the money that's been in and going out during the time there. So, like I said, the city's had a good year, very good year actually. $900,000 increase in fund balance, and the last two years, especially since you paid off that $500,000 loan. So, it seems like there's something else I just wanted to tell you, we'll discuss it later. I discussed 911 with you. I think that's it, so. But if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them for you. Like I said, the city, they're doing a very good job, y'all are doing a very good job watching the spending and making sure that y'all are paying on time. Come a long way in the last four, three, four years. Yeah. So you need to be committed on that. So, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next order of business, and I'm going to try to get all this right the best I can. If I mess up, I just mess up. The first thing we have to do is reinstate Mr. Gary McCord as the local emergency management director. Now, do we, Ms. Kim, do we also need to have council approve your position, Robin's position, Jamie's position, Chief Rowe, Chief Ratliff?
Do we have to do that in the form of a motion, or I don't just?
Well, that would hold your.
Is that one?
We don't have to do that, I think so.
So, so council doesn't need to do that, right?
Just the local.
But now, according to Gary, we do have to reinstate him?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we'll need a motion and a second.
I make the motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? All right, now, since we've got Gary reinstated, we're going to, we're going to do the oath of office for those people I just mentioned. So if you're in this room, stand up, raise your right hand. I'm going to go through the oath, the whole oath, I'm not going to have you repeat any of it. And then you're just going to say, "I affirm," or "I swear." And, Ms., well, now wait a minute, wait. See, I knew I'd mess up, Bob. I knew it would. You all can sit back down, man.
Exercise.
Let's go down to the appointment of the tourism member, and that recommendation came from Chamber. And they recommend appointing Mr. Chase Carter.
Is he here?
No, he's not.
Chase is not here. Chase is not here. And I think he works at Appalachian.
He owns Appalachian Insurance.
That's where we used to live, that's what I was going to say. Yeah, he lives in my, he's both our, Ohio.
And so that is the recommendation, to appoint him to the Tourism Commission. So if we can have a motion and a second on that.
Motion to, for, on the, Mr. Tourism Commission.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Now, Mr. Pack is recommending to appoint Ms. Patricia Nelson to the Paintsville Utilities Commission, correct?
Correct. I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Now, if we can all stand up, since everybody's been approved in, in all this, then raise your right hand. Now, when I get to the part where it says, "The Office of," do you want me to just?
The Stand Office, how about that? Your Appointed Office.
So I'm just going to say to the Office of your Appointed Office. Got you. All right, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of this Commonwealth and the Constitution of the United States, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the Office of, the Office of your appointment according to law. And I do further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this United States, have not fallen duels with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so belt me God. I affirm. Do we get through that? One way or the other. Mr. Bosch, Mr. Bosch has a request for counsel. He has given you a couple of proposals. You can come up front here, Mr. Bosch, if you want to.
Okay.
Is five minutes enough time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we desperately need those golf carts. I've got two bids, these are actual bids. I put a little bit of synopsis on the front of each of the bids. I prefer us to go with Endeavor Easy Go bid, there's a lot of really good reasons to do that, there's a lot more value to that bid. The upfront cost to the Easy Go bid for 30 carts is $50,000, whereas the club cart bid is only $48,000. But there's a lot of value in the bid for the Easy Go, and that's all spelled out on the front of it. One of the best reasons, number one, is that Easy Go will take our fleet of carts, trade-in as-is. And that's a crucial, because our, that's a crucial factor, because our carts are in really bad shape. The second thing that there, for the Easy Go bid, is that their warranty will include all parts and labor for five full years, whereas the bid for a club cart, it's really a three-year warranty. There's a few things on there that will be for four or five years. But the fact that Easy Go, Endeavor Easy Go is willing to take our carts as-is, and the fact that they're willing to warranty their new carts for five full years complete, really, those are really valuable things. Number three, on the list of why I would prefer to go there with the, with the Endeavor bid, they've got a heavier build, more durable front end, which becomes the nature of our golf cart paths. That's really a crucial thing. Number four is another crucial point. To make this, to make the purchase of these carts feasible, we've reduced our fleet from 40 carts to 30 carts. That saves a substantial amount of money. What Endeavor's has agreed to do is, at our discretion, whether we can do it or we don't have to do it, we can rent a cart for them for $60 per month. So if we find that we're having a little bit of trouble getting through, which I don't think we will, with just 30 carts, we could rent one to five carts for $60 apiece for a month. Number five on that second page, they have agreed to, Endeavor's has agreed to give us, when we rent carts for the K-Day and PIT, those are our two biggest events, we usually rent about 30 carts each of those. For the K-Day, it's $1,500 for 30 carts for one day. For the PIT, our invitational tournament, it's $3,000 for 30 carts for three days. Because of the rental for their carts, if we go with them, the K-Day fee will drop to $900, because their fee is $30 per cart. And they're going to give us 20 free carts for whatever event we choose per year. So our rental cost for the PIT tournament, I actually put $1,680, we would save. Actually, for the PIT alone, we will save $1,860 a year. We normally rent 30 carts, now we're going to have to rent 10 carts. He's charging $30, $27, $27, so we're going to save a little bit of money there. So per year, we would save $600 on K-Day and $1,860 on PIT. So obviously, you can see there that this bid just has a lot more value than the club cart bid. I did highlight that the club cart, are the people we've been working with for a long while, and he's been a reliable and honest person. But there's just a lot more value in the bid for the Easy Go carts. Here's, here, here's.
I didn't read that.
No, well, those are the highlights, and that really, if anybody has any questions at all on these two bids or why we need your carts. I have some additional information here. Well, I'll pass it out if you want to see it. If you don't, one of the, one of the key pieces of information, if we were to wait because the trading value on the carts that we have now drops quickly, and the carts are going to rise in cost, it's estimated that it'll cost us around $30,000 to run these carts for another year. $30,000 out of our pocket. So it's only going to cost us 50 to get 30 brand new carts, and 30 to run the carts we have now. And I'm going to pass this out.
That $30,000 for maintenance?
No, it's actually, I'll give it to you.
I think he's talking about a loss.
Oh, okay. It is maintenance, the maintenance is factored in there, you can see right there. And actually, those maintenance costs are a little bit low because we have, we have some good products.
You don't need any, you don't need any. You don't have to. So you're, you are saying that for 30 golf carts, it's $150,000?
Yeah, because we're trading.
For wood?
Yes.
Are they gas or electric gas?
Yes.
The gasoline?
Electric.
I know we need the, yeah, I know we need the gas. Well, that's interesting. I didn't know you could get on that chain.
Part of this reason is we had, we have 39 carts, and we're trading in all 39.
Right.
So that's a big part of why it's such a cheap price.
Question. Most of these carts were purchased in 2013?
All of them were purchased in 2013.
By the thought.
Did we not make any kind of purchase two years ago? Why am I saying, saying we did?
I thought we purchased a.
A couple more or something.
A couple of work carts.
Work carts.
Oh, lovely. Yeah.
And that was about two years ago.
Yeah.
But since 2013, we haven't purchased any at all.
No.
No free carts, because there's a pro shop for your owners.
Well, you know, in 2013, we bought 40 for a hundred.
They wanted to go out or off.
And, and they weren't new.
No, they were new.
And the, well, what I mean is, they weren't.
They were new carts.
We still had some that we turned in also, even at that.
Oh, we traded in a lot at that time, I'm sure you did. And that's part of the reason we would probably be closer to 90 if we weren't trading in, if, if we were buying 40 new carts. That would be 10 new carts, and then, you know, 4,000 change, so yeah, it'd be 40 some thousand dollars higher on those 10 extra carts.
I was just surprised, and that, that's not astronomical price, is what I mean.
And the good thing he's offered to do for us is if we find that that 30 carts is a little bit short, we can rent for our, maybe one or two months of our busy period at just $60 a month, for the whole month.
And he's giving you a break on the Pro-Am and the.
Oh, he's giving us a tremendous.
And the Tarment, yeah.
Yeah.
Got you, got you. I see.
Am I correct here, you're saying there's 15 carts that don't run it off?
There's 17, actually.
17 carts. And they're taking those.
And we're going to push them up on the trailer. Seriously. And that was the main.
You got a dead maintenance van over there?
Actually, I have another piece of paper here that I'd love to share with you.
Well, Mr. Bosch, we're, we're kind of.
That's why I showed them right away.
We're kind of pushing pounds.
The carburetors were faulty on these units, they're a big problem. Carburetors in these carts fail.
Oh.
It's a, it's a problem.
Okay. Well, let's discuss it, because, because what's going to have to happen now is that you'll have to, we'll have to advertise, won't we?
No, I don't think that.
In the paper? We have to advertise the paper?
Well, were these bids, again, did you just list the bids?
Yes.
Or were they, you'll need to publish an advertisement for bids, if anybody else wants to go in on it. I don't know that there are any other. There's Yamaha on the other side of the state, and they normally don't service here or work here. Are there, is there any time limit on these bids, or do they limit time that may make an effect?
For how long will these two bids you've got be in effect?
It said it would raise three and a half percent after January 1st, is what it said.
Well, this is already the fourth thing.
That's something I saw, yeah.
He's, he's not going to do that. Basically, I have his assurance that he'll hold this bid until, it's, it's kind of iffy, but he'll give you enough time to hold this bid. I mean, the thing that I have, gave you there where we're going to spend $30,000, he said, you know, if you guys wait till the spring. But I feel like, I think he put down there it was 35 to 40 days from the.
You just need to advertise for the bid.
Yeah. We, we have to advertise for the bid.
He'll, tell me, he'll hold. I hope you choose the Endeavor people, I think it's much better value. If I call him and tell him, I need whatever time you tell me, I need him to do it.
Well, we'll, we'll let, we'll let council discuss, you know, who, I'm like you, the Easy Go's the best way to go. But we'll let council discuss that, we're happy to advertise, it's still in the paper though. Well, I know, but I don't want that to happen.
I don't want.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't want this.
I don't want to take the chance.
I understand.
All right, so.
So we just need to like, put out bids, and then we can discuss it.
Yeah. Yeah. Discuss. But it, it doesn't have to be next city council meeting, we can always.
Right.
We can always discuss it individually and then call a special call and get this done. But, but they still need a little time, the council does, to figure out what, whether they want to.
Usually, it's what, three weeks that you have to advertise? Is that?
I thought it was 10 days.
14.
14.
14.
Okay. Well, Aaron's here, you can tell, so.
It's a requirement for the, in David's.
Okay.
But you enlightened us, you enlightened me for sure.
Good.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bosch, we appreciate it. Now, item number five, you say that you want to, we have to wait until we get the.
The other.
Let, let Mr. Baldwin explain item number five, convey real property to Paintsville Independent School System.
The council had voted previously.
The council had voted previously. Their agreement in principle to convey parcel property adjacent to the baseball field, the city park, to the city schools. We do not yet have the survey description that we need to draft the deed. So once that survey gets completed, we'll get the deed completed and we'll be able to look at the map and see exactly what's being conveyed. There'll just be a little section beyond what's already been conveyed to the school, what we talked about previously.
So we just want to table that?
Table it till we get the survey completed.
Can I have a motion to table number five?
I'm making a motion.
I see. All in favor? Opposed. Number six, we've already taken care of. Number seven is to consider a non-exclusive franchise for Seabridge Acquisition, DPA, suddenly, to construct and operate a cable system.
This is similar to what Foot Hills requested and the ordinance passed for Foot Hills. It's a non-exclusive franchise used the city right away for, I guess it's suddenly, to operate their cable system.
We can't, we have to do that, no.
Well.
Yep, 'cause it's not, I mean, I, you know, I don't want this. I don't care.
But I mean, we have, I mean.
Non-exclusive.
There's no way less than compelling reason not to. I mean, if it's just a matter of, you know, the fact that, I don't think there's any problem with space or anything like that. They've been using it anyway. So it's just a matter of a formal agreement so you can regulate it to the extent that it's allowed under. Federal law occupies most of this field so you really can't do anything other than, than. We can't, restrictions on, you know, this provides that if they tear something up while they're working, have to put it back and that kind of thing. At least you got that much, so. Just them using your space to operate their system. You can't grant, you can't grant exclusive franchise.
That's what I'm thinking, we have to.
On cable system, that is. They have customers here, I think.
Yeah.
And I'm sure not for them, I can tell you that.
Well, I'm gonna, we gotta have a motion. Gotta have a motion in the second.
I mean, it's got, I mean, they have to. It's not like they're not gonna get it.
Well, if they've got customers here in the city, you know, wouldn't be not right to. Not the customers, you know.
I'm a customer.
Yeah.
I am too.
I am too.
The point is you can't operate it.
You got that no matter what.
And this is just a formal agreement that sets out the basic parameters that the city's allowed to impose on them, which is, you know, like.
I saw.
They used to have an office in this town that we could go pay our bills and stuff and they moved out of here and went to Prestonburg Park. That's one thing. And the other thing, their cable system's off about every other day. Channel eleven is.
And if you, if you bundle it, everything's off. Everything's off. Everything's off.
It's a truth. I don't, I don't like it either, but. I know we gotta do it. I'm not saying, I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
Fix your hand on cable. Have we got a motion in the second?
Yeah.
Yeah, reluctantly you did.
All in favor? Now, you have, you have to show hands. All in favor, you have to show hands.
It's gotta be done, I mean.
I have to, don't. We got all. What we got? What, we got, we got five. And opposed?
No.
Preston is opposed. Okay, item number eight, we've got open bids on surplus property and this was what? The Dr. Cusa's property. We only have one bid. We've got one bid, so I'm assuming.
Now, what's this for?
This is for the little piece of property up at the Dr. Cusa's.
Oh, okay. I know, we're already done.
Well, Dr. Cusa, we didn't get a bid leasing.
Yeah, he had been leasing from the city. Uh, please accept my bid of five thousand dollars for a piece of property advertised for sale by the city of Paintsville. Describe this line between Main Street and Paint Creek, both telephone code, which presently marks the line between property of Dr. Cusa M.D. and extending with Main Street, a distance of one hundred and twenty feet and dents a straight line to Paint Creek. So you've got a bid of five thousand dollars for that little piece of property. We, we vote to accept. Can I have a motion to accept the five thousand dollars for that piece of property?
It's only good news. Most pretty good price.
Makes it proud.
We got a motion for Mr. Hall to accept.
I'll say.
Mr. Preston, say it. All in favor? Opposed?
Are we allowed to have the name of who that was? You want that? Are we allowed to have the name of who submitted that bid?
This is my lawyer, right?
The thing you said, Dr. Cusa.
Cusa, not Cusa.
Here, I'll let you read it. His lawyer said something like that.
It doesn't benefit anybody. Strictly parks that he uses for parking, but it doesn't benefit anyone.
Okay, now, since Mr., Mr. Hale told me that, reminded me this morning before the city council meeting that we had to have a second reading, we need a second reading of the.
This is the.
The amend the recreation ordinance?
This is the ordinance amending the recreation commission ordinance. First reading, last meeting, the second reading. Members, the recreation shop, the recreation commission shop consists of five persons appointed by the mayor's approval of city council, four of whom shall be residents of the city, and fifth, a member may be a current board member or representative of Paintsville Little League. All commissioners shall serve two-year terms. And the change in that is it changes the number of commissioners from nine to five. Adoption of rules and bylaws. The commission shall adopt rules and bylaws at the time, place, and meetings and shall conduct thereof. Three commissioners shall constitute four. The commission shall establish a regular scheduled meeting and shall meet at least a quarter of it. Recreation director. The recreation director may only be employed or discharged by the mayor in accordance with Kentucky law. The commission may at any time make recommendations to the mayor regarding employment of the recreation director. This changes the existing ordinance in that the existing ordinance is really in violation of Kentucky law allowing the commission to employ the director. The director is an employee of the city, that's the mayor, and therefore, there's a higher and firing. Duties, the recreation commission shall advise the mayor, city council, recreation director on matters related to development, maintenance, and operational parks, playgrounds, recreation centers, recreational programs, recreational facilities. We recommend rules and regulations, fee schedules, policies and procedures governing the operation of names of city parks and recreation sites. And then the monthly report, the commission shall make periodic reports rather than monthly reports. Periodic reports. The city council covered the income and operating expenses of the recreation facilities and recommended the council for approval of all works for improvements or repairs involving the expenditure of three thousand dollars or more.
Can I have a motion?
I'm gonna motion way first, the.
Second.
So we got a motion in the second, then we roll call. We need to roll call this one.
Okay, David?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
and Rick?
Yes.
Okay, the last thing on the agenda is we need a first reading of an ordinance to amend our, I guess that's our general fund budget, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Why are we doing that?
Well, you, you remember back when we agreed to help the animal shelter out?
Yes, we don't, we discussed that. Yeah, I do remember that.
Remember that? Well, it's going over.
The budgeted amount to the, to the animal shelter was six thousand. If it's been changed, then I gotta change the budget to reflect the three thousand dollars.
Two.
Yeah.
And money comes from the contingency.
Continuity fund, yes.
That's the corresponding. And the ordinance just changes the numbers.
So we just go ahead and vote on first reading? You don't need to roll call, do you?
No. There is actually this ordinance, amendment to the ordinance that wanted to handle budget for fiscal year July one, two thousand eighteen, and June thirty, two thousand nine. As established by ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash O two, is hereby amended as follows. And included, somebody shall be the following item, including an additional three thousand dollars to the animal shelter.
So we just need a.
We don't do anything on here. Till the next time, Ron.
So you need a motion for a second?
We need a motion for a second, so we're gonna roll call it.
Yeah. Well, I need, I still need a motion for a second, so we're ready.
I make the motion.
Uh, open to council. Anything from council?
I don't know.
Okay.
I know you do it. I've been hearing rumors and then I've talked with David and I've talked to Tim and I've talked to Bo and talked with Shoes about. And we might as well discuss it now and get it, us discuss it and get it out there. I hate that. It just goes against everything 'cause kids don't have anything anyway. We don't have a ball now, we don't have, not, not the city's fault. I'm not, I'm not blaming the city. But to not have a swimming pool is just really horrible, particularly for the kids, not just in Paintsville, but in Johnson County because it's, it's used by people all over. Even Martin County kids, I think, use it. But I understand that it's in bad disrepair. And it's been in bad disrepair for twenty or thirty years. And we patched it up and fixed it. But I understand that we're not gonna be able to do that. But I understand we can keep the Olympic-sized pool open for the summer, is that correct?
Well, yeah. I'm not, look, if.
Shoes here.
Yeah, yeah. You know, Councilman Boucher and I, we went over there and did a walkthrough. And, and I'm like you. Our kids need a pool. They need places to go and things to do in the summer. And, but I really think we have some safety issues over there.
Yeah.
That needs to be addressed. Some more, I have some real concern. I mean, it's everything from the condition of the, the changing building, whatever you call that, and the restrooms to the concrete cracked, not level, a stumbling hazard. There's some issues that.
Since I smoked, since I smoked in the bathrooms over there and that's been a long time ago. It's needed to be fixed. It's been mild, dude. You slip, falls, dangerous.
Oh, the coat of paint is.
It's in real.
Coat of paint is not gonna, that's like putting a Band-Aid on a broke leg.
But like I told you.
It doesn't accomplish much.
That just didn't happen overnight. That's been, that's been happening.
That's right.
And now it's come to the point where the kids are gonna suffer this summer for that. But in the long run, I think there's, I, I believe we ought to tear that building down personally.
I think we need a new building.
I think we need a new one. I think we need to put some outdoor showers. Shoes, we talked about, you can tell what we discussed.
You have to have restroom facilities. They're in terrible shape.
Okay, that's, we talked about that too. The, those restrooms that they did have for the ball field, you remember those down there? Could we possibly get them in shape? I understand that we have, now, I may be wrong about this, but I was told this, that we have a certified plumber. Not that we couldn't use utilities. I'm sure they'd be glad to help out. But we've got one, I think, on the street apartment and he's a certified. But we've got people that I think we could use to, to get them back, to get it in shape so we could at least leave, leave the Olympic-sized pool. I even mentioned the shoes, that, that baby pool is so nice that I think if they thought no one else was gonna use it, that people would rent that out for kids zero to six to, to use that even during the daytime if you didn't wanna keep it open all the time. But we could even, maybe even keep where you buy food because that's not attached to that building. But if you tear it all down, you gotta tear it all down. But you can't do that till after the summer's over. I know that. But I really, I'm hoping they're gonna keep this.
I'm sure it, it's gonna be a drawn-out process because no matter what the council and the mayor decides to do, you know, they're gonna have to be, a study done. They're gonna have to be.
Well, shoes.
Bids, there's gonna have to be all kinds of stuff as far as a, a new building and restroom facilities. I mean, it's, it's.
Well, Shoes has already looked into that.
Oh, yeah, Damon and I both have done extensive research on the next steps and where we need to go and where we'd like to go, comments, counsel.
And you've got blueprints of.
I've got, I left a picture for you to look at right there from one company that's already done a three-D image. They took an aerial view of where our pool is and did a three-D image of a possibility. That's not a guarantee, that's just a possibility of what we can do with it. And that leaves the Olympic pool in play. That doesn't take you out. So basically, you know, you're looking at maybe a little water park in Paintsville that you won't have anywhere else around unless you're driving out or away from here.
Well, what we, what we decide to do is one thing. But I guess what I'm asking is that you leave the Olympic pool open from, until five?
Well, with whatever council wants me to do, we'll go from there. But yeah, there's probably possibilities that we'll, we can fence in the area that we're gonna work on and leave that Olympic pool open. It's gonna take a little thinking and some, how to figure out how to take admission and get people in and out of there. But I mean, it is a possibility and we got a few months to, to work that out.
Well, if they're gonna have the, if they're going to have the, like we talked today, if they're going to have the swim team, I, I really feel as if we could still keep that Olympic-sized, at least. So of course, the older kids are not gonna wanna use that Olympic-sized pool. We're only talking about kids probably ten to twelve at top.
The biggest draw we have at that pool right now is that slide.
Yeah.
It's all getting people to come in there. That, that pool's hard to peel into anybody at all if it was that slide.
And I know that they don't make a lot of money there, but it's something I'm, I'm willing to take a loss on. And I think the majority of the residents of Paintsville would take a loss to keep that open for those kids for this summer anyway. That's my, that's the thought.
It's not the condition of the big pool itself.
No, but around it.
It's the concrete around it.
Yeah, yeah.
The big pool, I look at the big pool and Bob Bright says it, it's still leaking.
Yeah.
Like thirty thousand.
And I tell you, that's what's happened to the concrete is there's been so many leaks under there that it's caused the, the surface under it to drop.
No.
The concrete cracks. Next thing you know, that it drops and it, and you know, there's places that, that high kid could trip and fall and break an arm leg or something.
I wonder they haven't already.
I wonder they haven't already. And that was, that was our concern. And you know, the restroom facilities are what they are. They're just absolutely terrible.
Somebody is turning.
Turned down.
Somebody's turned their head over the last year. Somebody's turned their head away from that swimming pool.
We need, we need a new.
Well, we need to speak to the human life.
I don't know who it is.
Somebody's turned their head. That's what we need. What do you mean? So that thing's just been shut down, somebody went by there and looked at it.
Oh, alright, biggest question, biggest question I got, where you gonna get the money?
Yep, that's my next question.
Get the money for what?
Well, if you're, if you're gonna put in a flash park, where you gonna get the money?
Well, I was hoping we...
If, if you're gonna tear the building down and put a new building up, where you gonna get the money?
Well, do we, do we don't have a new grant writer?
Yeah, well, yes we do.
I was hoping that we could put in the direction of the new grant writer to help us out with, to help us find ways... Now, I'll tell you, the, the, everybody's under the assumption that JB put that pool in. That pool was put in by the Junior Women's Club, I want to, to say. And that, the, Beau, when I, Beau and I first talked about it, he said they don't have one in Pikeville. Well, I talked to someone up there and they, a billion, they, they solicited a million dollars in private funds to buy the swimming pool, to put in a, a field and, you know, a practice field in the locker room. However, they also solicited four hundred thousand dollars and the, the Y up there is going to put, they're gonna put it in the Y, but it's gonna be open to the public and you don't have to join the Y to do it. So they've taken care of it. And I think we're the gem on the big safety. I don't know how they tried to eclipse us, but I think we've got people who are willing to step up to the plate and it's important to have that facility for whatever it costs, I think it's important for us to have it. That's just how I feel now.
Right. So how, how long a turnaround do we have on a possible grant? A year, year and a half, two years?
The one that we've looked at before would, would be a year and a half.
A year and a half.
There's another one I might have in mind after hearing this discussion.
Well, I do think the building needs to be torn down and they can tear it down now for all I care because we're not gonna be using it and they're, we're not gonna have the big pool open, so, but the Olympic sized pool, if we can use the restrooms that were existing restrooms and coordinate off some way to where we can just use the Olympic sized pool and keep everybody out of the rest of the way, as far as I'm concerned, I can tell, that building needs to be torn down. It's got a flat roof, it's been, it's been a problem from the, from the giggo that's been a problem. And I think everybody's well aware of it, I mean, we all grew up there, all of us. I worked there. Yeah, and it was a mess then.
Okay, so we're not gonna make a decision here tonight, but we are gonna discuss it individually and find out what's the best route for us to go, right?
I would love for somebody to say, y'all, sir, we're gonna keep that Olympic sized pool open.
That, that Olympic pool's staying open. That Olympic pool is staying open.
Okay.
I can promise you that and, and, yes, sir?
The plans, the, the plans that I have or whatever we do, that Olympic pool's not going anywhere regardless. However, we determine if we're gonna work on that pool this summer maybe, we're obviously gonna have to barricade it off, you know.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, yeah, there, the fence will go up, keep people out of that side, so, Olympic pool's not going anywhere.
And if we can't work on that other pool this summer, we may have to open it back up. We're not saying, I'm just concerned about the building. That building has, that building's gonna come down, it's gonna be done with.
I agree.
And what you gotta remember, all your electrical comes out of that building too.
Yeah.
That, that, am I correct in that the electrical comes out of that building that serves the pool, the pumps and everything?
Um, not all of these.
That's right too, where the equipment for the... Well, I didn't know if you was gonna combine both of them and take them both down, build one later. We just have to tear down a section of it, like the girls' bathroom. The building's not in great shape.
And then, Virginia, when we get done with that, uh, we'd like to see if you can put in a few bobbling lanes. Cause we need that too.
Is there anything else from council?
Yeah, I do have one thing, Mayor, and I'll make it quick, and I know that Christmas just passed, but we've got this Christmas coming, but I really think that we need to explore some opportunities to purchase some Christmas lights to put over around the plaza. If anybody drove through there at Christmas, there's, I mean, we've got, it is, we've got a lot of businesses, downtown look great and the city look great, but that's the city too and there's absolutely, but there is no Christmas decorations on three twenty-one through there to plaza and I think we need them worse than anything.
It might help drive up traffic in the shopping center.
I mean, I agree, it was, it was, I mean, I, I didn't really realize that drove through there one night, so we need to look at that sometime this year too. And that's all I've got, Mayor, thank you.
Anybody else from council? Anything from the floor?
Yes. Uh, has there been a makeup date set for the town hall meeting?
Well, Mr. Josh is back there, he can tell you.
Yeah, just a second, I'll put it.
Thirty-first, no?
Uh, yep, you're right, Mayor.
Thirty-first. Anything else from the floor? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.